The prayer followed by the pledge.
Know what I'm saying? Know what I mean?
Father God, we return to you this morning and we're thankful for your blessings you've showered on us and our country. We pray you would just watch over us and be with this meeting, guide our thoughts, our actions in all we do. We pray you would watch over those that protect our country and wear a badge, be with them and keep them safe. Director Spurrow and the current president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we doing first or we're starting at the public hearing?
No, the public hearing is advertised for nine o'clock, so we probably should do that first.
We're gonna start today's meeting with a public hearing regarding Chad Klein and important things.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Melissa Norby and I'm with the City of Decatur. And the City of Decatur and Adams County are working with Chad and Wells County Economic Development on a grant to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. It's for their workforce development program. We plan to apply for the max, the maximum $250,000 that will provide training opportunities for incumbent workers in Adams and Wells County. Through programs like the Adams-Wells Manufacturing Alliance, we think it's a good partnership that our two counties be friendly and work together and go in together with this grant application. Some of the classes that would be offered would be entry-level industrial maintenance, CNC, welding, and some leadership skills classes. These are areas that Chad and then our, his kind of counterpart in Adams County with Connect to Careers, they've been out and they've talked to the local leaders and the local businesses and said, what is it that your employees need? What are your, what things they need to be trained in? And so we've identified these classes to be held in both Adams and Wells Counties and this funding will help provide training for those classes. So today I'm here, we're here to have a public hearing. Anybody that has questions, comments, otherwise, we're encouraged to do so. Chad and I can answer those questions the best we can. And we also have a signing sheet if anybody, if everybody would please sign in.
You did pretty good last time, Chad, but if you just maybe...
Right, yeah, just like Melissa said, you know, from being out and talking to our businesses amongst the county, there's, the biggest needs that we're hearing in regards to training are the industrial maintenance, our CNC welding, and our leadership class that we hold here in Wells County and then also what they're looking, they're looking to start one in Adams County have, have been very full and so we want to be able to continue those and continue the, to help finance and provide some financial support for all of those classes. Training is a big thing, just like Kevin had said a couple of weeks ago, you know, as we continue to work on our workforce, provide opportunities for our workforce, if we can provide some, some training dollars to be able to help offset some of the costs for our local industry, we can get people trained quicker and, and more efficiently.
Comments, questions? Open it for comments to the floor for the public hearing in this regard. And then we'll close the comments. Need any other approval?
Nope.
Very good.
We're good. We're gonna have a public hearing in Adams County tomorrow to get their part of, both counties have to have their own public hearing for, for public comments, so we're gonna do theirs tomorrow. And the grant application is in two phases. The first one is due October, is due August 19th and the next one will be due in October and we'll have to do another public hearing for that second round, so we'll be back.
And we'll actually be back, or I'll be back prior to then. We'll have to have a letter signed that you're working cooperation with Adams County, so it'll be signed by essentially a resolution signed by both Adams and Wells County Commissioners there. You guys are working together to apply for this grant, so I'll be back before.
And you're proposing $25,000 to be contributed by Wells County?
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Marty, you are on the agenda.
Oh.
I'll sit here.
We are not gonna, we're gonna open with, the minutes were sent via email. I'll accept the motion to approve.
Motion to accept the minutes, yes, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Payroll number 16 for calendar year 2016 totals $205,810.68 with a total 216 claims in the amount of $541,949.56. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Morning.
Morning.
We have 80 inmates, six are DOC and 13 are F6 DOCs. As far as the chiller goes, I'm still waiting on one bid yet before I can bring it before Commissioners and Council. I'm trying to figure out a replacement for it. It's, everything in my building's 30 years old and it's getting out. Besides that, we're dealing with the lightning strike. We've got quite a bit of, yeah, things that were involved in it back up and running, but we've still got a lot of parts on order and that, so we're progressing.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
Most of my stuff today is just sort of an update of where we're at on the three road projects we're working up north. We need to the Millings Hall, we finished that up last Thursday, so it took two weeks and we did have some pretty long days some days. It was six, seven o'clock some days till we got done, but we've got it all down. We are putting some 73s today on some spots on the Hared North. We did get some pretty chunky stuff. They did a couple parking lots, so we're trying to get that covered up before we start sealing. And I got tobacco crew starting today up on 950 to try to get tobacco jobs down there and then we'll move over to 400 West and stuff, so, so they're, they're coming. It's just taking a little while. As far as the other two roads, we'll go ahead and get some 73s put on that. We'll probably do that if we have a rain day, if it shuts us down sealing, we'll, we'll start hauling up and then we'll get them covered up and stuff too. They're, they're not bad. I mean, they're a little rough, but not too bad, so. Roadside milling with us hauling millings last week and people on vacation, I only had one mower running, so I'm gonna try to get the other two started. We should have all three of them running tomorrow and then we'll start getting into some of these other townships. Chip and seal, we are gonna start tomorrow. We're actually gonna start in Harrison Township and then move over into Liberty with that. Talking to Brooks, they gave me a tentative date of the week of August 15th to do the 100 North project. So that, that should be happening. Did get a phone call from Troxels, they were concerned about us doing it this fall whenever harvest and they were having equipment, I said, no, it should be done before then, so.
Say, check with them.
Yeah. Yep, yep, they, they wanted to know for sure and stuff like that, so. And then I, I just put the town of Panetta hot mix request on there, didn't know how you want to handle that.
How much did they do again?
They, they actually did from 218 to the bridge. And see, part of that from the bridge down to almost the first street on the east side is ours. That was one of them half-half deals, where they have half the road and we have half the road. So it actually is ours, the one half is. I just...
The one half is. Have, have we had this situation from Indiana, Panetta, I mean, in Panetta before or Uniondale before?
No.
Mary Crews or...
No, we've never had anybody make a request before. The only, the only concern I had was they didn't say anything to me till after they did it. So that's what I'm saying, that's...
Which we did not budget for.
We don't hot mix that stuff in there.
Right.
We don't, we don't make a habit of hot mixing. I mean, that's over in the plug.
I mean, they were doing their street and, and they said, okay, we'll go ahead and do it all and all that stuff. I, I should've told Roy, I said, you should've contacted me and say, we're gonna do this. We went to county to maybe pay a portion of it and then, but, so, it's, it's totally up to you.
Like I said, we don't hot mix, not like that.
Right.
Not there.
Right. So...
I'm not ready to make a decision yet.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm not, you guys.
That's fine.
Go ahead.
I don't think we should cover it.
Well, my, my thing is, where does this lead?
Well, that's, that's true.
Just let other people do things and then ask us to pay for it later.
Right.
It's not a good question.
And like you said, we, we, probably that section deserved chip and seal with the others.
Yeah, we would not hot mix.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny it.
Second.
Okay. It's all good. I'll send a letter back. Thank you.
You wanna vote?
Yeah.
Three oh.
Yeah. I'm such a president, I don't like to do so. And thank you for mowing the river of roads by that part.
We didn't get that last week. We did need that.
Step up to the plate.
Good morning. Last week was the deadline for the Community Crossings Management Grant. Wells County's application went out on the Friday before, July 22nd. Received a notification back from INDOT or the LTAP group that was receiving that, that our application has been received for those four projects. So our name is in, all the information, the letters of support are in. We should hear back potentially the end of August, maybe early September with projects that have been selected or maybe hopefully all of them, you know, be wishful. I'd like to thank everyone that submitted letters of support for the project and I've actually identified them here on the list. Scott Mills from Norwell, Steve Darnell for Southern Wells, Chad Klein from the Economic Development, Councilman Todd Mondsmith, Todd Feekter, and there were a couple other petition forms that we used as letters of support for the project. So all those were support letters. We had, I think, three, at least three letters of support for every project that we submitted, so I, I think that goes well for us. Another item on, on my notes here is for right-of-way dedication. Judy Glenn actually submitted a form for additional right-of-way on her property adjacent. We're gonna be doing some drainage work and the side ditches for her property and so as part of that, we're gonna get her right-of-way established at the, the standard 60-foot or 30-foot half right-of-way. So her paperwork's here for, for you to sign and then we can get that recorded. Hopefully, and my note B under that is, we have established a policy with the Auditor's Office on how we're going to do the research, documentation, and then return that through Roy, get that information back notarized, and then hopefully we'll piecemeal our, our right-of-way documentation in the future. And in fact, I've got a meeting with Mike Ostenheiser Jr. this afternoon to go through how we're gonna document that, put that into the GIS system. So that's coming together. I, hopefully that'll be a policy that lasts us for years to come. It's not something we're gonna do quickly, but it's something if we set the policy then we'll be disciplined about it and we'll get some good records in the future. Last item on here is just an update on County Road 300 West Bridge. Put in a note here that we're, the contractor said they'd be done August 5th and then I got an email saying, oops, they've made a mistake on an anchor bolt placement for guard rail, so that has changed potentially to August 5th finish date because they need to change something. So I underlined it on all your notes, so I don't know exactly when they're going to be finished. August 5th is their contract date, but it was a mistake by the contractor, so I'm pending some information on what they've gotta do to correct.
He didn't tell me that when that was on Thursday.
No, so that was, that was, that was, this has been a last-minute correction by them. They found that, I think, when they went to put guard rail on, that something is not lining up, so. There's been some emails that have flown around here shortly, so. It should be soon. For now, drivers just need to respect the barricades, once, once they're off then, you know, just be careful going through it until the contractor's out of the way, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Nate said, we do have a right-of-way as brand signed by Trudy Marie Glenn and asked the Commissioners to consider accepting that.
He has a motion to approve that.
Yes, we do.
Motion to approve the right-of-way change.
Second.
The motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lisa and Rick?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're here this morning to get the process started to remarket our health coverage. The insurance committee is Rick and myself and Ed Herman and Krista. So, Rick is gonna take over from here.
We've, we've given you a, a letter that we'd like to send out to the potential vendors and one of the, uh, things that we'd like to do is get this process headed in the right direction as quick as we can because if you remember the last time, what, four years ago, we, we had to work long and hard to get it done in time for the new year to get started. We've been having some very good help from Ms. Heckman with Pension Benefit Consulting Group. And I think that Lisa sent you a letter, a copy of the letter last week and we'd just like for you to sign off so that we can get things started. We, we have run the letters past Roy and I'm not sure that, if there's any comments from Roy yet about it or not.
I, I don't have any comments about the letter as far as the issue being exclusivity.
You have a comment? None?
No, I mean, I'm assuming that your, the committee has suggested that it's worked well with Jennifer, we'd like to see that continue.
Right, yeah. For the last four...
And I know she's been here for presentations before, the Commissioners have found her input to be helpful and kinda relied on her to help coordinate that rather than each year start over again. But I also did look in terms of public purchasing and competitive bidding says it has to do with supplies and this isn't a supply. And I'm assuming that the amount of money that the county spends on health insurance is over $150,000, so it's not a small purchase, so that, that leaves a request for proposals. So the only comment I would have in terms of the letter would be, they're really not submitting bids, but response to our request for proposals. I don't know that that's necessarily, I just don't know that it went to a bid rather than it's, it's their proposal with respect to the county's request for them to make a proposal. Other than that, I, I'm fine with what they appear.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, just send out an RFP for it. Is what you would do.
Request for proposal. So how does this play? She is an agent that can get us information on several different companies, is that...
She has been, yes, yes.
And, and what about the companies that we were thinking about looking at that might be outside of what we've looked at before? Can she get that or is this going to exclude those?
No, no. What, what the idea is here is that for Cigna, PHP, and United Healthcare only, those are the ones that she's been marketing already each year. Those are the only ones that would have exclusivity to Jennifer, right.
Okay, so anything we wanted beyond that could still be done and brought to us.
Right. We're welcome, welcoming all the...
That was a mission I didn't understand.
Welcoming all the others. It's just with those, and Anthem would be the fourth one because she's the agent of record, they, they'll only give her the information. We found out the last time that we did several bids from the same company with different numbers. And then we have to sit there and go through it, well, we find out this agent didn't give all the information, this agent did and this one didn't. This way it just helps cut down some of that gut work that we have to do on those four.
Because the numbers from all these companies are gonna be the same going to each one of these.
If they get the same information.
Yes, and, yeah.
And that's what we found.
Well, okay, so, but other than that, anyone that would like to present us with an RFP would be able to do that, just not using these.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Motion?
So motion to accept that and sit out the letter.
Second, as an RFP, correct?
Yes, yes. Three, zero.
Do we wanna correct the word? Or did it, does it say bid or does it say proposal? You may wanna make that correction for, for Roy's recommendation.
You know, I started and I like to, ah, says you're interested in receiving RFP quotes for health insurance.
You're good with it?
Okay.
I go with that.
Well, fine.
The top letter is the vendor letter, the next three are the...
Exclusivity.
Spell it. Thanks for doing that.
Well, it's just getting started.
Yeah, I know. We have a little better starting point than what we did.
For sure. Sign up to the side, to the right.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks. Thank you.
What do you have next for us, Ken?
Uh, down to the miscellaneous business, we have a couple board appointments. I've sent you the applications that we've received for both of those, so if you want to act on those today.
First of all, we had community corrections.
Mm-hmm, have community corrections. We have one board appointment there and we have the library board appointment. We have one appointment there also.
Do you guys want to do that today or do you want to have an executive?
How, how much time do we have before they have to be appointed?
We have two.
We have one for each of the boards. So I think the appointment ends for the library board sometime this month and that's definitely...
The 15th.
The 15th. And then community corrections, what date is theirs?
It's past.
It's, I thought it had passed, so...
It's not, it's not for...
No. So the, the person I think that stays on until...
Well, until...
Reappointed, I think it's probably the same report, till we get the reappointment done, so.
Have you even run through them?
Yes, I have, yeah.
Do you have opinions and do you want to wait and discuss it?
Which one we will talk for? Community corrections?
Community corrections, they had two and they actually gave us a recommendation as to the one that they preferred. I mean, we're obligated to choose. And so, Roy, do you have a suggestion?
Uh, I don't know that I saw those applications. I did see the library and I did see they got an email from Stephanie as far as her thoughts.
Oh, I didn't see that.
What they were talking about.
You wanna open it up?
Open it up, the, yeah, can you find it? Can you find it faster?
There you go. It's library.
I have the, um...
Okay, she agrees with what I was thinking.
I have the applications here too, if you guys want to look at them. And Roy, I think he's gonna do it, send it down where he can look at them.
That was independent of reading that.
Ask community corrections, is that the one you're doing first?
We don't, we're not doing either one of them first, we're just talking.
Talking about them.
I'll make motions on these.
Okay.
Community corrections, we had two applications. I'd make a motion to appoint Greg Waters.
That's the recommendation of the committee?
Yes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero.
I'll take those back there. Before I set off or would that be enough?
In the library, we had five, four, five applications and...
Which I just wanna comment is absolutely wonderful that all these people are putting in applications and they're interested and willing to serve on any of these committees, so thank you to everybody who applied.
So we have one of the, and then the council will have one of the pick.
She's one also, absolutely. Yeah, and it's on their agenda tomorrow night too, so they have one.
You got a pick of the litter.
Yeah. You get, you get first pick.
They get the leftovers, so. So, no, we're very thankful for everybody because a lot of good people applying, so.
Yes, very good applications.
As for the library appointment, I would make a motion to appoint Ted Ramsey.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Thank you. The second appointment's gonna come from the council, correct?
Correct, yes.
Parking lot. Make sure Kev, Kev looks at these here.
Um...
I think these are the two, these are the high bids, but you do have a parking lot now.
Are we doing this now?
Uh, it's, if Kev wants to do it, if not, we can table it, we can...
That was the original total and then that was divided out to repair and then top...
One was the repair and one was the top coat. Okay. And you spoke with...
But it's still lower than the others.
I spoke with Tim at the top last week.
Okay. As far as the work to be done for this year, what are you, what are we proposing?
Well, we had originally spoke of patching it this year and top coating next year, or the following year as the need comes up. Can I, you see an issue with doing that in that order or...
I was getting the impression that you had already spoken to someone and they had started.
Nope. No, we, we...
Somebody already patched the holes?
No, no, no. Not that bad.
Where's the needle?
We marked off the territory that needed patching, we didn't do it.
That might have been the last gentleman, that he gave us a total quote, not for the patch and not for the surface, and I asked him to split it. And maybe he marked it off to measure it, to figure out what the patching expense would have been out of the total quote, so, that's the only thing I could picture.
Okay.
This is strictly a patch of the surface. Okay, okay. And I think this was both, but this is high. Yeah, okay. And then, if we wanna participate, at what percentage, uh, through the commissioners, line item? Low, that's low. Yes.
In total, or?
For both.
Partially?
I think it's gonna be low.
No, I mean, how much do we do now?
Do we, one, two, percentage, pitch in twenty-five percent, forty percent, fifty percent, ten percent?
Are you set, Mike?
How did we, how did we do with the roof? Did, was that an expense that was then covered by the bargain up by itself, or did the county, um, contribute?
I'll be totally honest with you, that was before my time, and I do not know.
Cause we have, we can't find any.
Yeah, I, I, I think bargain, I think you guys paid.
It was discussed, but never in our records or minutes.
Yeah, I, I can't see that we paid anything, the county didn't.
If I were to guess, I'd say that's true.
If I was doing it, I mean, just to. By now.
I was thinking half that, but.
That's fine.
Yeah.
But that's just me.
No, that's.
Or, or.
Cause our total that we're looking at.
How about six? Six?
Yeah.
Alright, let's, let's go ahead and make a motion to accept that, and then we'll talk, if you want.
Okay.
Don't you think, Mr. President?
I will make a motion to accept the low bid by top asphalt paving.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
Who was that from?
Top.
Top, with two K's. I will then go on.
And the amount was how much?
For eleven thousand nine hundred dollars total.
That's for those years?
That's for the repair.
That's for the total cost.
And, yeah.
I'm gonna do this, um.
Any kind of.
I.
If you two want to move, I would just give.
I, I would propose that it be done within the next year. Shall we say that?
Are we gonna patch this branch?
Patch, patch first, and then completed by next year, probably, or as need arises. And that we will contribute up to fifty percent, we will contribute fifty percent of the total cost when it is finished.
I only have one caveat, uh, that we have to work under, uh, as you know, we're business and we're open. But the business is not open on Mondays and Tuesdays. If that work could be done on Monday and Tuesday, where we wouldn't have to shut down our store, that would be greatly appreciated. If not, we'll just shut down the store.
Well, I'm sure the fellow will do the best to accommodate that if he can.
I would think, could he do it like Labor Day weekend, or Columbus Day weekend, or something to that effect?
Absolutely.
Kinda incorporate in his schedule. I think the, the repair won't be too bad. Uh, I think he can make that happen during your hours. The total surface, you might have to close one day total, but I think if they did it, maybe on a Friday and did it during the weekend, so, you could open back up on Wednesday or something.
Do you guys wanna cover the patching in total, and then the remainder of the six thousand dollars toward the other when it's completed?
I'll do it either way.
Let's do it that way, that way it gets them, that gets them started.
That way, that way you don't have to worry about.
We'll cover the twenty-five.
Twenty-five fifty.
Fifty for the repair now.
Up front now, and then.
Under the remainder of the fifty percent.
And then the remainder of the fifty percent.
After the top.
Upon completion of the next.
Go.
Okay, wait a second.
I think that makes more sense.
Twenty-five fifty, you're paying twenty-five fifty.
Twenty-five fifty upfront.
This year.
For patching?
For patching.
And then, if you, the minus, the balance is ninety-three fifty.
Then fifty percent of that ninety-three?
Uh, ninety-three fifty.
Well, not quite, not fifty percent of that.
Let me do it. But you got eleven-nine?
Eleven-nine.
Minus the twenty-five.
Twenty-five fifty.
I would just say six thousand, but that's okay.
Ninety-three fifty.
Divided by two, minus twenty-five fifty, yes. Make it hard.
Ninety-three fifty, forty-six seventy-five.
Forty-six seventy-five remaining the following.
Next year.
What do we wanna do with these?
Got it?
No.
So, I understand, twenty-five fifty, we come up with half.
We're paying it.
The twenty-five fifty, we're paying for right now.
Okay.
We're paying patching, mine.
They're good for this year.
And then we pay half of the.
Which will be forty-six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Got it. And we pay that when it's completed?
Yeah, that'll be next year.
Okay.
Well, anyway, we'll figure out the numbers next year. Let, let us do the math here at the end, but that's the idea.
And could you give me a heads up when they're about to start, so that we can.
I will call him after today's meeting, telling him to schedule you, your number was thirty-eight twenty.
Eleven-nine.
Yes.
Okay, I'll have him call you and, and work out your schedules, so that it can happen.
Okay.
Divided by two.
Thank you, Mike.
Cause we're paying half.
So, that was ten, it's not.
Minus twenty-five fifty, so that leaves him thirty-four hundred to go towards the next part. You don't wanna do it that way?
They'll make out on it.
The county's paying half of the total cost, but they'll pay the twenty-five fifty, a hundred percent upfront.
They'll get more if we do it the other way. Of the front. Right.
And then the balance of the county's will have.
Fifty percent, and then it'll work out.
Thirty, thirty-four hundred dollars.
Could be less than forty-six seventy-five. Then they can go buy some more stuff.
Okay. Need somebody to second the motion.
She, you made a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
What's next?
Thirty-four hundred bucks, that's what it's gonna be.
Right, thirty-four.
Yep, we're good.
Fifty percent of the cost.
Yep.
Yeah, the total.
Of the eleven-nine.
Right, the total.
Yep.
Okay, got it, got it.
Anything else on your list, Kev?
Uh, yeah, just to, um, let you know that we are advertising for two vehicles, um, that the community corrections have. And you will be, um, looking at those on the fifteenth, will be the first time you look at those, they advertise in the paper this past Thursday, and they'll advertise again this Thursday. And, um, so then we'll both do the same process we did prior, that you, everybody can continue to bid until, and have the at least fifty dollars.
Either accept the bids or extend it another.
Yeah. Yeah, so, if we get more than one.
Right.
Um, bid, yeah, then we have to extend it and give them a chance to rebid. And it, it's specifically tells how to do that in the paper.
Right.
So, just so you're aware that we are accepting bids, and the place will be open the next meeting. And, let's see. I just got in the, um, in the mail on Friday, um, from the Bluffton Street Fair, asking that we again, um, allow them to use the Courthouse Plaza from the period of Sunday, September the eighteenth through Sunday, September the twenty-fourth. And then also requesting the donation that we always make to them each year too, for the fifteen hundred dollars.
Motion approved.
Excellent, our second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three zero.
Uh, the last thing I just wanted to bring up is that we need to, um, consider what we're gonna do for the, um, county farm. That will come up for Lisa then, this year, so if we're gonna make any changes, um, and when you want to bid that out. So, be thinking of that, and we probably need to start acting on that.
Okay.
I was gonna do that. Tom, we'd like to be our agent.
Sure.
What did I find out about summer, about that corner?
I think we're still working on the, the sell-off of that corner.
The sell-off of the corner?
Yeah, I, that's, that's my fault, I haven't followed through on what we need to do to sell that. I guess as far as the lease, I, I go ahead and delete that from the description.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take that little section off.
Figure out that we're gonna dispose of it.
So, it'd be a little bit less.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, and I don't, you know, if you want the same process or make any changes, so, I just wanted to bring that up, so we can be aware of that, because we probably would need to put that out for bid, and we need to advertise it, and so there's some time.
Adequate, adequate notice out there.
Yes. Thank you.
Sure. Is that an annual lease, or is it a multi-year lease?
We've done that for two year, for the past years, we've done two years, two-year leases.
But we could change that, if we choose.
Multi-year leases, you'll get better numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Just cause I know it's consistent, so, I'm longer comfortable with that. Any other comments?
I don't have any.
Anything? Yeah?
No, I took a question from Nate when we done.
Okay. Jessica? Public comment, open?
Just a bunch of smiling faces back there.
I know.
Motion, adjourned.
Second.
We're finished. Thank you for coming.